Good evening everyone, adequate notice of this hearing would provide necessary such notice to the IFRC Press, the Milltown Patch, the Milltown House and public information website, and posting of such notice that the former T Minor administrative offices, H Elementary, Middle and Secondary School in the District of Longbourn.
This is Caminiti.
Here.
Mr Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mrs Venuese.
Yes.
Mrs Skelasky.
Yeah.
Mr Soprasky.
Here.
Mr Tope.
Here.
Mrs Ray.
Here.
Mrs Tobacco.
Here.
Mr Kapah.
Here. Now, you have motion for executive session to discuss it, personnel matter and settlement agreements.
So moved.
Okay. Discussion or data?
Aye.
I oppose the sessions. This is the end of day.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the pledge. The pledge leaders.
To the right, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on nation, under God, in this court, where we have justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start this evening with a, I'm sorry, we do have a moment of silence here as well. With sadness, the district has learned of the passing of former employee Roger William Al Gore, Edward Bechel, and Susan Freeman, and Deborah Nelson. Roger William Al Gore taught at the high school level for over thirty years before retiring in 1993. Edward Bechtel worked as a high school teacher for thirty-three years before retiring in 2011. Susan Freeman taught in the district for twenty-five years, beginning at Thompson Middle School, and then High School South before retiring in 2006. Deborah Nelson worked in our facilities department for over eighteen years before recently retiring in 2024. We extend our deep disconsolances to Al Gore, Bechtel, Freeman, and Nelson Japanese. Thank you. Now moving on to a committee report, we have curriculum and instruction, Mr. Tull.
Thank you, Frank. Yes, we met last week on the nineteenth. Just a few updates. One interesting development, digital literacy, which is one of the elementary specials, is no longer going to be a standalone special for elementary, freeing up time and staff for other things. But the concepts and the standards that the digital literacy class addressed will be embedded throughout other content areas in the elementary level this way. It's not its own standalone digital literacy class, which I think we all can recognize. Kids don't get their technology training in elementary classes anymore. So it doesn't really have the same need as it did before, but those standards will still be addressed across other content areas. Morphology update, that's the programming for the upper elementary three to five literacy. There's been training going on recently with all the district, with the effective teachers, to make sure that those strategies, those concepts are being reinforced through all areas, and in particular, across different sixth grade content areas as well. So outside of just their ELA class, in other areas, they're reinforcing those vocabulary and language development literacy skill. The K to five math pilots are still, are on track and ready. The staff in the K to five buildings that will be piloting those two programs this coming year have all received their training and their materials to get ready for those pilots. And then the last update, I actually want to turn it over to Mr. Cullen, who just had some exciting news about a successful grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Tull. So we applied for and were awarded grant money, it's called the Focus Grant. Approximately $25,000 will go for our early literacy screening. So it's going to purchase our Dibble screener. In addition to that, we're going to be running workshops for our teachers here in district. In addition to that, we're looking to purchase some professional development materials for those teachers. I mean, obviously, we understand the importance of early literacy, and we want to make sure that we're emphasizing it throughout the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, and great job. Like most grants, there's very strict limitations on restrictions on what the money can be used for. So the department was able to facilitate that towards the early literacy, which I think is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tull. Moving on to student services, Mrs. Wright.
Yes, so after the curriculum meeting, we did have the student services meeting. We only had a few things on our agenda, one of which is the restructuring of the ESS contract and all the important services that they provide to the district. And I know that a lot of work has gone into this with Dr. Alfon and Mrs. Granger. And it was really great to hear that the contract for the 25-26 year is going to be able to keep in place the clinicians that we had at North. So two will be remaining here at High School North, one will be at High School South. They are also going to be providing the summer clinicians for the extended school year, ESY, that's happening over the summer for no additional cost, which was really great to hear, as well as they will still cover our Fitcher returns, because that is something that they have been doing, I think, very efficiently throughout the district. And we did not want to sort of upend that, because we also want to be able to get our students back to school as quickly as we possibly can. So that was really great to hear about the ESS contract. And then also, we spoke about the implementation of the in-class consultation model for both social studies and science that was implemented this school year in the middle schools will now be coming into the high schools. So there will be an articulation session for the teachers that will be happening, or actually did happen now, on Friday, June 20.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Moving on to co-curricular, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yep, so we met on Friday, June 13. First, we talked about clinics that were ran by our district coaches. We basically, I had a few questions that happened kind of in the last couple months about how we go about the process. So we talked about the overall permits that required to prove insurance, the reimbursement rate back to the sports activity programs and such. We also talked about coach hirings, and specifically for 25-26 school year, in addition to head coaches, whatever vacancies. The athletic administration. Oh, so we were hiring an athletic administrative assistant, high school athletic trainer, High School South fall athletic manager. So there was, you know, five different coach discussions that we had. We also talked about co-curricular activities. We have a plethora of clubs and activities where a lot of the, we weren't getting attendance in certain things. So we talked about things that we can do related to that, whether or not we can do an audit and revision, things like that. So we also talked about our co-curricular handbook requirements and expectations, building in the central office, oversight, setting minimum thresholds for numbers of students participating in these particular programs, the elevation program, the co-curricular budget recording process related to collapsing of the existing clubs and new clubs and settings. We're reliant basically on the teacher's contract for 2027, on what we can do, whatever, we can kind of add during that process. So we're kind of restricted right now, what we can kind of consolidate classes and such. We also talked about the morning after program. Basically, we just went over kind of an overall update on the registration of championship program, the after-school programs underway. Champions-related information can currently be found by the district and elementary school websites. Two champion open analysis occurred during the week of June 9. One event took place at Harmony, while the other one took place at Nuttbaum. And lastly, we talked about the yearbook statements. Discussions related to the yearbook statements at the high school level and middle school took place. Yearbooks are currently created by the parent groups in the elementary program, exploring the possibility of having elementary staff produce the yearbooks at elementary school level.
Can I just make sure there's a clarification? The positions that you mentioned that we were hiring, they're all existing positions. They just needed to be filled.
They were vacancies.
Yeah, so anybody think that we're putting new positions in or whatnot.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, we're now going to open the microphone for public comment about gender items only. If you wish to make public comment, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Kate Farley, Ivy Grove. I wrote to you all already, I don't want to, you know, rehash everything that was in my email. I just wanted to, again, state, you know, my concerns over one of the items on the personnel agenda. I know personnel is tricky, I don't want to talk a lot about personnel, there's confidentiality issues, et cetera. But as I urged in my email, I would hope that there would be a motion tonight to release table personnel item 11C until more information can be gathered. As noted in my email, it seems that the person who's being recommended for this position is less experienced and more expensive than another teacher who also went out for the position, was a Nuttbaum teacher all year long, a very impactful teacher. You can see a lot of her students are here tonight in support of her. And I know how this works. I know that for the most part, the board's responsibility is to, you know, consider the recommendation of administration. Administrators know their buildings, they know the needs, I get all of that. But I also know that it's your job to, especially when there are concerns raised, ask questions and ask for the justifications behind those recommendations. And if something's not adding up, I would just urge you to take a pause. We have time, we don't need to fill this position during this meeting. And just do a little digging to see what's going on, because, especially in light of all of the budgetary issues, and I understand that, you know, $10,000 in a teacher's salary, you know, one teacher over another isn't all that much in the grand scheme of things. But if we're supposed to be physically responsible in light of our issues, it's just puzzling to me that that would be the recommendation when that teacher is less experienced, does not have the same sort of tried and true capabilities and recommendations that the other teacher would be less expensive, has. So I would urge you to table it so that you could take more time to discuss it. And thank you for your remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Farley. Would anyone else wish to make a public comment on a gender item?
Good evening, everybody. Mike Maggiapinto, 672 Bead Boulevard, from the Red Bank section of Middletown. I am also talking about an agenda item in the personnel committee report, which is section 10 of tonight's agenda, letter P, number six. Ninth person's name down. It is a transfer of an individual, I'm not going to mention the name, but it is listed clearly on the agenda of a move from High School South to Ocean Avenue. That person happens to be one of two school nurses at High School South. And I've been living in this town for 25 years, there's always been two nurses at both High School South and at High School North. I know from friends of mine that live in Ocean Avenue and that family members that live on the north side of town that there has been a placeholder position in this district for a school nurse who is out on long-term disability. That place was at North for several years, and it really didn't work at North, because many of you may not be aware, when there's a shortage of school nurses at the elementary or the middle school level for sickness or for vacation, and if they cannot get a sub-nurse, one of the nurses from the high school rotates for the day to that school. Okay? So this transfer is removing one of the permanent nurses from South to Ocean Avenue, which leaves up in the air where that placeholder position is going to go. So there's nothing on tonight's agenda that addresses the fact that there is not a replacement going to High School South. So I would assume that that means that that placeholder position from Ocean Avenue is going to go to High School South. And that is completely unacceptable for many, many reasons. Like I just stated, the nurses at both high schools are used as emergency replacements in other schools as needed. So if this transfer goes through as is, at best, you're going to have a temporary sub-nurse at South. I am assuming. Because again, it doesn't specify that you're moving another certificated school nurse from another school to High School South. So that's going to be a problem. The other problem is, is that I don't understand why this has to be done at this board meeting. What is the rush? Does anybody want to comment on that question? Okay, I don't understand what the rush is. This can certainly be held in abeyance until it is completely fleshed out what you are going to do to address both that substitute placeholder issue and the hole that will exist tonight at South if you make this transfer by itself. So I think that's very problematic, as everybody on the board, I'm sure, knows there is a pretty serious special ed population at both of the high schools. The acuity of the kids at the high school, from my experience of my kids going through High School South and graduating from High School South, it's pretty intense. So I would think that we would want to have permanent certificated nurses at both high schools at all times. So, and the other thing is, if you want to open it up as a transfer for other school nurses, we don't know if there are other current school nurses in the district that might want to go to South. Okay, there's nothing on Appitrac for an application for somebody to go to South. Furthermore, there was never anything on Appitrac for an open position at Ocean Avenue. So I don't understand why we are at the position that we are at right now. It makes absolutely no sense to me. And I would like the superintendent to please remove this item from tonight's agenda. And separate from that, if that is not going to be the case, I would implore all the board members to vote no. members to vote no on this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else wish to make a public comment on a gender item? Name and address for the record, please.
Scott McPherson, Middletown resident. I've talked many times about transparency, and I understand that the board interviewed a new property and casualty broker at last night's special meeting. It would be helpful to members of the community if you let us know who you were interviewing beforehand, so that we can have an opportunity to look into, see who these people are. And if it's someone that we know something about, good, rather good or bad, that we can then send a letter to the board and the board superintendent to let them know. So it'd be helpful to us if like with the, with the new board attorney, we knew ahead of time the three candidates that we picked from the RFP, and we were able to take a comment if we wanted to. So in the future, if you could just let us know when you're doing those interviews, who it is you're exactly interviewing, so that we could have an opportunity to maybe weigh in on it.
I don't know, something must have got slipped. You knew about the attorney, but you didn't know about the PNC or?
We had no clue who the PNC.
But you knew about the attorney, so obviously maybe something must have happened that information we kept let out to or?
We knew who the three attorneys were beforehand that were going to be interviewed on that Monday night.
I'm saying maybe something, obviously something was not sent, to be sent out the attorneys or?
I don't know how it was communicated to them.
Oh, that's why I'm confused. I thought maybe that we need to send out the memo to you about the PNC, but obviously we didn't send out the attorney either, so confused myself.
So I think it would be helpful if the community knew, whether it's the attorneys, property and casualty, or whoever it is that they're doing interviews with, like, so who it is, right? We want transparency. We want to know what's going on within this district, Mr. Alphone.
That's why I was asking you, how'd you know about the attorneys? You said you knew about the attorneys. I wanted to know how you knew.
Someone told me. I don't remember.
Okay, that's why I thought we sent out a memo. This is not my job to send out the memos to you. That's why I'm asking it. That's something we can do. I would like to try and get your.
And I appreciate that. So who can you have? Well, you, the superintendent may have to, so what?
Well, I have to find out first if it's legally allowed, how the past practices have been, so actually I can get to come back to you and know that.
Well, if you submit, if you send out RFPs and then you select the three.
And that, by the way, is public knowledge on the sites. So everybody's aware of this.
Okay. So if you could let us know who the three are that you were interviewing, like, the attorneys, I don't know, how many did you interview last night? We have no clue.
It goes down to 30.
Okay. So we didn't know who they were. So my point is, if you could let us know in the future, if it's not legal, it helps. All right? But if it is legal, let us know. Because we want transparency. We want to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to make a public comment? Seeing no further comments, we will end the public comment section and move on. We're going to go to Dr. Alphone Superintendent briefly.
So I just want to, I just want to congratulate the school community on a successful school year, particularly to our middle schools on their promotion ceremonies and to our high school graduates. It was a fantastic two days of celebrations and ceremonies. Fortunately, the weather did hold out for our high schools. Thank goodness it's not this week. But I appreciate the flexibility from the high school communities because we did have to adjust the time because we were definitely playing a little bit of beat the clock with the weather. So I know Mr. Kirkpatrick is happy that that is over. Because we are on weather watch all day long, leading up to graduation, but it all worked out. So thank you and congratulations to our graduates. We held our second strategic planning session with New Jersey School Boards last week. Groups came up with focus areas for goal setting, which will be conducted at the final session in August. There were about 55 people in attendance at the second session. Once we conduct the final session in August, the steering committee, which met tonight, will be working with the administrative team and the Board of Ed to craft action plans to address the goals. Tonight at our steering committee meeting, we talked about some progress with the facilities utilization and boundary analysis study, examined enrollments and projections based on previously done enrollment studies, just to see what was projected versus what actually happened. And then started to work on some of the overarching themes that were identified at the second New Jersey School Board section with the intent of forming subcommittees moving forward within that steering committee. So we are excited because the work, the hard work is just beginning as we phase out in August from the information gathering to the action planning and goal-setting stages of the strategic planning process. I just want to take an opportunity to thank our student speakers who are obviously not here tonight, they're on their, on their summer break, for dedicating their time this year. Sophia Cascon from high school south, Paige Peyton from high school north, they put a lot of effort and energy into creating those reports and dedicating time to come and share all of the wonderful things that are happening in our high school communities. And also a thank you to Ryan Miller from high school north and Megan McCann from high school south for serving as our student Board of Ed representatives. You know, that is a great experience for them in how a board functions and certainly engaging with the public. So we wanted to thank them because they are giving up their social time and carving out time within their busy schedules to come and participate. Finally, just thank you to our outstanding staff members for a wonderful school year. As you know, as parents, it's a grind, right? You know, as we get towards the end of the year, everybody's aiming towards that summer break, so the staff is no different. And certainly, it was a successful year. I do want to thank my administrative team for all their hard work and effort. So much goes on behind the scenes that no one person can do alone, so I just want to extend my gratitude to them because, you know, things operate the way they do because of all their hard work as well. And I just want to wish the community a wonderful summer break, and we'll see everybody back in September. It'll be here before you know it. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alphone. All right, we have a resolution, as Dr. Alphone just spoke about, honoring like 24, 25 student representatives, whereas Meghan McCain and Ryan Miller have served with distinction on the Middletown Township Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the members of the Middletown Township Board of Education extend their best wishes to Meghan McCain and Ryan Miller in all their future endeavors. Okay, I need, now I need a motion to approve. Now I need a motion to approve 8A and B. Amy Roke.
Can we have a little discussion first?
Discussion if you like.
I just want to say, on B, what we are awarding tonight, I will support the board and I will vote for it, but I'm very disappointed that we didn't listen to our administration with that. So I just wanted out there.
Amy Roke.
Mrs. Caminiti.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mrs. Minuies.
Yes.
Mrs. Skolasky.
Yes.
Mr. Soparowski.
Yes on A, no on B.
Mr. Tull.
Yes.
Mrs. Wright.
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco.
Yes.
Mr. Capone.
Yes. Okay, now moving to the business consent, office consent agenda. A motion to approve 9A through R. Discussion?
I just want to talk about something on the bills list. The amount that we paid for the audio at the graduations, I think is concerning, $17,980 for audio at the graduations. We could have owned the system for that. And I think that's irresponsible to be spending that kind of money for that. So, and as far as I'm concerned, they didn't turn the microphone on for the girl singing at high school south, so a portion of that bill should be deducted. Four girls up there singing and the microphone not on. They're there for one hour and they couldn't even perform the service. So I just, I don't agree with that.
Amy, is that with two graduations or five graduations, the 75?
Five.
It was still excessive. We could have owned the system for that.
Doesn't this board have sound company?
Yes.
Do you?
Yes.
Pay for hotel rooms for the people and there's audio companies locally that we could have hired.
Okay, we have a motion there. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm opposed on Mr. Tadua's legal fees.
Amy, I'm also.
I'm opposed on paying that sound company.
Anyone else? Abstentions. Okay, I need a motion to approve 10A through P, which is a recommendation superintendent of schools consent agenda.
We're going to do a roll call, Mr. Capone, for the HID.
The HID.
Yes. I'm sorry, so we'll do 10B through P first.
Did you say B through P?
B through P, boy through Peter. And then we'll come back to A for the days. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Okay, discussion?
Please say again what we want.
We're doing 10B through P, and we're going to come back to 10A.
Okay.
I had one question. I just, I didn't know who might know the answer, but is there a difference between our contract with IREDDI this year versus last year?
Just you want to answer that?
I don't know if you know of any.
No, not at all.
It's the same program?
Yeah, we're doing the same thing, offsetting some of those cost professional development with a Title II money. Because you can charge a portion of the PD that we're required to have through Title II.
The PD for the IREDDI?
The IREDDI, because there's ongoing professional development.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And aye. Oppose?
I'm in favor of all and opposed on 10M.
I oppose 10P on the new hires, they're hitting. Abstentions?
We're sorry.
We're on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did, we did perp now.
10P through, B through P, I said.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, now we're going to 10A.
I'm a no on 11C.
We didn't get to 11 yet.
No, 10P, 11.
10P is not.
10P, oh, 10P, 11C, you say. Okay, got it.
I'm a no as well.
I'll say it here, Paul.
11C.
No on 11C.
And Mr. Capone, you are a no on 10P.
New. Yep, and 11C. Everyone else? Okay, 10A. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, we're going to do a roll call.
Do I do a roll call? Okay.
Mrs. Caminiti.
I'm with Stady.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mrs. Minuies.
I am a no on yes and yes on a no.
Mrs. Skolasky.
I recuse myself of voting on the case.
Mr. Soparowski.
Yes.
Mr. Tull.
Yes.
Mrs. Wright.
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco.
I'm a no on 291801, 292878, and 29247.
291.
291801, 292878, and 29247.
Mr. Capone.
He did say ditto on that, yes.
Same, Mrs. Tobacco.
I might go through those numbers again.
Good.
Okay, now heading to old business. Does anybody have any old business?
Yes. First of all, I would, I would like to congratulate all our graduates and say it was an honor to sit up here with Jake Dombrowski and Ryan Miller as they both go on to West Point.
And Naval Academy.
Yes, for Naval County. And I also would like to say how outstanding I felt the graduations were. I thought they were really well organized. It was great to see how much our seniors and even our middle school students have achieved. It was really even more remarkable to me was how many of our students are going into the service to defend our country. And it was amazing to see them stand up at graduation. I think it's more than I've ever seen in my whole entire 20 years. And I was really proud to do that. I also wanted to say that I've gotten to attend the honor societies and national honor societies and huge numbers of kids in our district that are being inducted into these ceremonies. And I really hope that somehow we can start to advertise this, especially our scholarships, how much money our seniors got from each school. I know we've seen people send us things from other schools on how they advertise, but I think it would be a great publication for our website if we could do that for each high school for the amount of scholarship money and maybe finding a way to even recruit more money by doing that. I think that a lot of our, our good deeds in our school district go unnoticed. And I think a lot of the achievements that our kids achieve go unnoticed. And there's got to be a better way to present that, but I congratulate them all. I also attended the art shows in the high schools and incredible work. I mean, it's like going to an art museum. We have so much talent in the arts in this district, and it's very impressive. So I just want to congratulate all of them and thank them for the invitations. And I always look forward to that at the end of the year.
Got it, thank you. Anyone else, old business, new business?
I do. I would like to make a motion to go to committee of the whole until we can, you know, straighten things out a little bit, because I feel a lot of us are left out on a lot of things. And it could be our own fault, but it could be lack of communication. So I would like to make the motion to go to committee of the whole.
Second.
So this is actually the way we do our committees right here, Joan? You should know from past presidency.
Right.
And next year, if you'd like to change the committee structure, that's fine, but this is the way we've been doing it for five years.
Frank, I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion to go to committee of the whole because committees aren't meeting, people aren't talking. That's not good. We really have to get together.
Committees are meeting. Committees are meeting.
Yeah, but let's just make sure we're in the proper conversations and, right? So I just want to make that motion and mark seconded, I guess. Roll call.
Is anybody in discussion? Anyone speak about this?
Yeah, I would, I agree with Joan because I was interested in having a facilities committee meeting, and I reached out to Mr. Artie about it because I hadn't heard anything. I'm a member of that committee. I had some concerns that were brought forward to me by some people, and fortunately, we were unable to get it scheduled for this meeting, which I was hoping we could do before going into the summer, given the fact that we just had a, we just approved a big budget. And I think it's important for us on the board to just have oversight. What are we doing? What are the projects we're working on? What are we? This way, when the community comes and asks us, hey, what's going on over the summer? Are we going to walk into the school with mold in September? Maybe we have some answers. So I agree with Joan because I was interested in trying to get something together, even if it was on Zoom or Google meets or anything. And I, you know, I don't know if Mr. Artie had, had business to conduct, but the end result was I was basically told we're not having a meeting, so I agree. I think it's important.
Well, to me, it would even address the personnel issues that we are hearing about.
Can someone take me through the procedure and what that would look like if we did committee of the whole?
You have open voting, just like this?
Just like this.
And you have five, so we can't even get a committee together. It's very hard in the summer because of schedules, you have four people for a committee. Now we have to have five to open a meeting. I'm sorry, but I have a really busy schedule and I'm not going to be able to handle seven more committee of the whole.
No, normally when you do a committee of the whole, it's not seven meetings. You do a question at one time. It's a workshop meeting.
So then you're going to, but hold on. We, hold on, Joan, 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 I wanted to speak what we spoke about, okay? Because we used to do committees of the whole when we first got here, but it got too much for the board members because we were doing it one week, the workshop, then next week was the voting meeting. That's what I think Mr. Tobacco was speaking about, that's a lot of dedication there to be there two weeks in a row.
But we're a very big district with a very big budget, and we should have more oversight.
People don't read their board docs, too. People on this board do not read their board docs.
Jackie, the fact that we were not part of this budget process is a huge issue, and it goes to every committee. The budget is involved in every committee. I'm not a fan of committee of the whole, but.
I don't think that has anything to do with committee of the whole.
Yeah, it does. It's lack of information.
The party's holding in for a meeting in exact to go over the budget. I'm not sure that.
Right, who was not a part of the.
Lack of information.
That's not a committee of the whole committee issue.
Who was not a part of the whole meeting, though, Joan?
We were not part of the budget process.
We were all part of the same exact thing.
No, we were not.
Well, well, putting it together, we got presented the budget and we're not part of putting it together. Either way, I would, I like my motion voted on to see if we can't go to committee of the whole because this board could be more important.
Is your motion for the same night or two nights?
Let me rephrase my motion, maybe I need to double it. I would like to make a motion to do committee of the whole and add the motion to go to a workshop meeting every month except for the month of July.
So you wanna add a week prior to the voting meeting, right?
It could be the week before, it could be the second week, that's, that's, that's.
Right, that's what I'm saying, two, so you want two, two more, two meetings.
A workshop meeting and committees of the whole. And I think that will help our transparency too, too. Yeah, workshop meeting is the committee of the whole.
So it's two meetings a month.
It's two meetings, but the same thing we had.
All right, you're adding a week.
Yeah, same thing. And I think that that would help.
And now you don't have your committees of four. You still come into more than one meeting a month.
Leonora, I'm the person that can always make it here, I'm not speaking about that.
Okay, no, no, I'm just saying.
You have a work schedule going, so I don't know if you can make it to everyone, but...
Listen, I went to a meeting and I was told, when I said that, I felt that we were a little broken. I was told to fix it. This is my way of suggesting how we could fix this board being a board of the whole until things clear up. I just think it's, it's good, I think it's transparent, I think the public's asking for transparency. It's a good way for them to hear what's going on. I, I, I'm not doing it to be mean or vindictive, I need information. And two meetings a month for the board members is not a lot for districts our size.
Plus committee meetings.
No, it's no committee meetings.
No, the committee meetings will be the committee of the whole. So it's two meetings a month.
I'm sorry, Frank, aren't you the president? Let's move aside this one that started the year.
We can make a motion. If you don't wanna vote for it, then vote no.
I vote no.
But I think the public needs to hear that too.
Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Before I put my vote in, just to be clear to everybody, that's every committee meeting or every committee.
That night.
All the way through that night, all of them.
But mine is that, mine is personnel committee.
Nobody should, personnel's closed, you can't have, don't do closed sessions.
Correct.
And personnel's closed, you don't have personnel's committee right now.
And you're also saying that there are some meetings that don't need to meet every month, so you might not have 11 meetings, you know, whatever.
Is there any way to cater this to certain committees rather than do a committee of the whole?
Meeting.
Like if I made another motion to have certain, um, committees?
I mean, we, we have certain committees now, you're saying, can combine them, or?
Yeah, I'm talking about individual, we can create a time or something like that.
You can, but you're gonna do more, four people at a time.
Yeah. I'm a no.
No?
No for Joan's.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Skolasky?
No.
Mr. Soparowski?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
No.
Mr. Capone?
No.
Just wanted to say, I gave it a shot, so the person who told me to fix this, I hope you're listening.
We're now gonna open the microphone up for public comment.
No, 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 I wanna bring up one more thing. I wanna make a request that we go out for an RFP on our special education attorneys.
You're gonna make an RFP for a special ed attorney?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We're not even here yet.
Doesn't matter.
Amy Rocco, special ed attorney, RFP.
So who seconded?
I do not.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Skolasky?
No.
Mr. Soparowski?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
No.
Mr. Capone?
I'm a no because I believe we just did an RFP a couple of months back, so I'm gonna say no.
I think it was about, it was a year ago, I think it was last year, about a year.
Ten months ago, yeah.
I also like to make another motion to follow up with my last motion on doing this as a committee of the whole, the interview.
I second.
Two seconds?
I will.
Discussion?
No.
Roll call?
I'm sorry, this is a motion to have the...
The RFP, Gary.
For the interview, so the special ed attorney to be done as a committee of the whole.
So did that last motion carry?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't.
Sorry, Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Skolasky?
No.
Mr. Soparowski?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
No.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Yes? Motion carries.
Any other RFPs on there?
I'm assuming Amy would handle the RFPs.
No, no, do you have any other RFPs you have for the...
Oh, no, I think that's it.
So, Mr. Tulp, just so you're aware, what was the question you were asking before about a motion carrying?
I just, if Joan's motion to put out for RFP.
Yes, that carry, yes.
That's what I wanted to know, and Amy answered it right, thank you.
Yes, got it. Okay, we're now gonna open the microphone up for public comment on non-adjournable items.
Right, very small. I know Joan's motion didn't pass, but I'd like to make a motion to go back to having workshop meetings once a month.
We just voted that down, Mark.
She voted out committee of the whole also.
No, that was going down, Mark.
It's the same thing.
Same thing.
Same thing.
It was going down. Now I'm opening up the microphone for public comment on non-adjournable items. This is closed now, guys, this is totally going down, okay? Public comment on non-adjournable items, please, if you'd like to step up and make a comment, please say your name and address to the record.
Kristen Rooney, Middletown, New Jersey. I wanted to just thank Joan because you're always there for the kids. And my daughter was recognized at the awards night as well as hundreds of other students in the district. And Joan was the only, the only board member present at that award ceremony. And I don't know if you know, but the kids noticed. And she said, I took a picture with Joan and that was it. So I really appreciate that because you do see the kids and you always recognize them and you seem to care a lot about why you're here and know the reason. So I just want you to know that we see that and our kids see it. And our kids also notice who's not there and they know who's not there often. So I would just urge you to remember that you're all here for our kids and recognizing them at the end of the year is kind of important. And I also just wanna thank you, continue to thank you for what you're continuing to do with this process. Even though it seems like it might be difficult at times, we appreciate that you're continuing to go to bat for what we as a community and a school district are asking for. So I appreciate that while this might not be comfortable, you're trying. So thank you.
Joe Campioni, just wanted to echo what you just said, actually, so...
Middletown, I'm sorry, Middletown, right? Uh, Middletown, yes.
Thank you everyone up here for your service and it's been a bit overwhelming, I think probably for everyone listening and everyone contributing, so just thank you. And Joan, that was awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that, I think everyone really wants transparency. And I think that, um, that vote was awesome, recognized it and I really would hope that we have more transparency and, um, you know, I think that's just a really healthy, good thing. So thanks for everyone and that's it.
Thank you.
I just wanna say one quick thing, Bridget Worschauer, Middletown, New Jersey. I know you guys are all volunteering your time and we do appreciate all your effort that you put in. I understand that certain things might be less palatable when we ask more time of you. This, since March, I have come to almost every single meeting and strategic training meeting that I can. I've got three kids. I've had to leave my six-year-old at home with my 11 and 12-year-old to watch her because I want to be in meetings. So I understand that you don't wanna give more time. However, when it comes to working together and having good communication with each other, you guys aren't there yet. So it is okay to take extra time and work on that. Now, if you don't want to, you are always welcome to resign. You're not going to keep me here as a prisoner. So never feel like you have to stay. But if you want to stay and you want to work together, let's do that. Thank you so much.
Eric Dowell, Maxon Avenue. Returning to the concept of committees. A committee work on boards is generally important on a board like this one, in a district like this one, it is critical. Uh, we heard three committees report out tonight and they were great reports that showed what can be done in a committee. But by implication, that means that other committees did not meet. And these were not minor committees. We did not hear a report from finance. We did not hear a report from facilities, even though, as was mentioned, we just passed a massive budget and as we all know at this point, there are big issues to resolve in this district. We also, again, did not hear a report from shared services, which at this point is, if there actually is, shared services meetings are not happening, the question is why? The members of the shared services committee should be beating down the mayor's door, demanding that the township pay for the class three officers. That was initially promised years ago. And the fact that it has not been brought back up, there, there's no understandable reason why. The fact that finance and that facilities has not met, we're all busy, but we also have all, we have technology. We have Google Meet, we have Zoom.
Eric, we, I don't mean to cut you off, we tried meeting, but due to graduations, we couldn't get on the agenda this month. And people, people have a schedule, obviously, that couldn't make it. I am flexible. We have this scheduled for next month already on the agenda and on account.
And that, that's great to hear. And then finally, again, shared services. I think we've heard it.
So shared services?
Share services go through Mrs. Darty and the business administrator of the town.
Has Tony or anybody reached out to Amy or we have anything that we need to put on the agenda right now, or?
No, we actually get notifications from the mayor, secretary, everything.
But, but you all should be asking for a meeting about the class three officers and perhaps other matters. Also on shared services, we've heard previously that every committee has four members. That makes sense, that's the maximum amount you can have on a committee to avoid sunshine. Shared services used to have four members. Currently it has two. Two additional members should be added back to shared services immediately. That, that goes towards transparency. So the asks...
So to let you know why that is two and two, obviously the township has five members, they have two people there and we bring two people there as well.
Yeah, there used to be four people from this board at shared services.
The town, that's not up to us either. The town has two people out of 10 because they can't have more than two people there as well.
And again...
I'm just answering your question.
But also, it's not as if the township is strangers, we, we know who talks to them. So our, our asks, one, committees meet regularly, especially the ones that are doing very important work. Two, this was something that came out of steering, community members should be appointed to committees. There is a community member representative on shared services, we all know who it is. There should be community members on each of the board committees. That helps with transparency, that helps with the community engaging back and forth with you all. And three, again, two additional board of ed members should be added back onto shared services. Um, just like was the case before, I believe, January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anika Baller. Good to meet you. Um, I'm from the MC, New Jersey, and I just wanna second with the, um, what you said earlier about having members who, if you don't wanna be here, you're welcome to resign. Mrs. Tobacco, I heard you say, when Mrs. Minuys was trying to get more committee meetings, you, I heard you say, some of us have lives. I just wanna remind you, we, this is our lives that you are dealing with. It's our children's lives, our children's...
It's mine too, it's mine too. I, I, and I volunteer a lot of time and you have no idea how much on board vice president has to do during the week as well. And I'm sorry that you object, but I give all of my time I have for five years to this.
This is the time for public comment. Please be quiet and listen. You're an elected official. You're not supposed to be speaking right now.
Oh, it's not, it's not.
It's not a turn to speak right now.
I'm dressed directly, but thank you, I'm not the board attorney.
She's in the middle of speaking, let her finish and then you can...
I said, we appreciate you all being there. I would also appreciate you give us the respect and not make comments under your breath. This, again, this is our kids' lives, this is our kids' education. We appreciate the work that you do. We're here, we're fighting for transparency, we're all, we're supposed to all be on the same team and we just appreciate your work and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Pearson from Middletown, I echo the sentiments of every state that has made up here. We're here to work with all of you. We don't wanna be a roadblock, we wanna be, we want transparency because we wanna know what's going on, but we also wanna advocate for our kids and for our district. There doesn't need to be this, this sentiment that's going on with a couple of the board members where it seems like they don't really love the comments made by the public. We're here to work with all of you, all nine board members, with Dr. Alfon. We're coming to these steering committee meetings, we're coming to these board meetings because we care about our children, we care about their education. And I know that all nine of you and Dr. Alfon and everyone else sitting over here does the same because why would you run for a position like this? So Mrs. Tobacco, Mr. Capone, Mrs. Minuys, Mrs. Caminiti, Mr. Soparowski, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mrs. Wright, Mrs. Skolasky, Mr. Foden, all board members, Dr. Alfon, we're here to work with you, we wanna work with you, we wanna support our children, we wanna support their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Before we close, can I say something? Great. In the spirit of transparency here, and we, you know, we're talking about the committee of the whole, it's a lot of committees all at once, right? And it's not that we're gonna be bogged down and we don't have the, the hours to do it. If it was said in a different way and they said that we were gonna do a workshop, which I'm all for, that's a different story and I would be all for that. Because then we can actually go through it in a process that we normally do, actually.
I think that motion was denied. That's what was denied. So...
I'll second.
Whether...
Can we open that motion back up?
No, the motion was already, it was already voted.
So, so my point of that is, it's, if that motion was the workshop, I would have approved it. And I am all for public comment and, you know, and transparency. And if we actually opened up these committees to the public, I would also be for that as well. But that's not what was said and that's why I voted away. I just want everybody to know that.
Just clarify that that's not what the workshop means. You have to clarify that.
Obviously.
If we said workshop, I would have approved it.
Okay.
We said workshop.
She did.
You did. Joan? You said committee of the whole. Yeah.
Okay, now make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No, there is more public comment.
I'm sorry, I closed the public comment, ma'am.
You did not close the public comment.
I, I adjourned the public comment.
You said, does anyone else have something to say? And then there was some discussion here.
Board members, board members.
You did not, no, you did not close the public comment.
Board members, I'll take control over here, you can speak, sir. Definitely. And then we're gonna close it after your speak.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Devin Rafferty, Leonardo, New Jersey, Middletown, New Jersey. I just wanted to point out, we have been saying now that the motion was denied. The motion that did not pass was, should you have committee as a whole and a workshop? That is a combination. That is, should we have A and B?
That is, should we have A and B? What was not voted on was, should we have committee as a whole, A? The motion that was denied, voted down, was, should we have A and B? There is nothing in the English language that would prevent you from having another motion to say, should we do A? And I believe not Mr. Caddula would echo me that that is exactly the way legal documents are framed. What was voted on was A and B. That motion was denied. There is absolutely nothing to stop you from going, should we do A? If that is denied, then you could also have a motion, should we do B? Then you could augment the language yet again to have C. But I wanted to point that out because the motion that I believe Mark was trying to make was not denied. Thank you.
Test one, two.
I'm Katie Littlepage, Maxon Avenue in Middletown. Could you let us know why members of the public were outside at 7:30? When the agenda said the public meeting would start, yet the public, the public was not allowed into the room for the meeting to start for another 45 minutes at 8:15?
So we have an executive session that starts at 7 o'clock based upon what has to take place during that executive session. That's why we put on there on about approximately 7:30. Most of the time, we will have this meeting open by 7:30. Unfortunately, tonight, we had a special meeting that was conducted with HIBs and we had to go a little bit later.
Okay, I just want to make that clear that we were all standing outside. Some seniors here from Shadow Lake standing, waiting 45 minutes. So I'd just like you to be more courteous of our time.
So like I'm telling you, for the most part, we've been sitting here, most of the time it's for exec session. After 15, 20 minutes, we wait for 35, 40 minutes to let you in because we, we put it out for 8:00 p.m. So now we put it out for 7:30 p.m. when we know any exec session, we can start that meeting.
Okay.
Open microphone.
The second thing I would like to say is, members of the board, would you please right now, this is being recorded, I think. So would you please right now raise your hand if you have attended any steering committees? One, two, three. Would you raise your hand if you've attended any steering committees? So all members of the board have attended a steering committee except for Mr. Capone and Ms. Tobacco.
I just raised my hand, man.
I've been at a steering committee. I just don't like raising my hand, but I've been at a steering committee.
Which one?
When?
First one.
The first one?
Yes, and there's problems.
What about strategic planning?
Can you please now also, that was my second point. Could you also raise your hand if you've been to one of the strategic planning committees? So everyone except for Ms. Tobacco and Mr. Capone have attended at least one strategic planning committee. I just want to highlight this because as all the other members of the community who have gotten up here to speak, we're asking to collaborate. We're asking to work together. We have the same North Star. We want what is best for our children. And when we hear flippant remarks from Ms. Tobacco, I'm sitting right here in front of you, say, I have a life, I've got things to do. And then I recognize that you're the only, one of only two members of the nine-member board who hasn't bothered to come to one of the strategic planning committees and only one steering committee meeting. It's concerning.
I'm not, I'm not sure that you don't understand either. Frank and I, as board leadership, have been privy with Dr. Alfon for the entire year of conversations about what was going to happen. We are not, not in the know on this. And I do not have to sit here and be told when I have to attend things that are not mandatory for a board member.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sitting here telling you anything. I'm just highlighting your lack of attendance and your lack of care.
If you guys attack us, it's really not a strategic plan.
Attack? I'm just highlighting that you have not shown up to any of these meetings. It's not an attack, it's just a fact.
I have more children and two full-time jobs.
All of us have children, that's why we're here.
Well, I'm sorry. You do not decide what I do as my time.
I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just...
You actually are. I am very well aware of what goes on in the steering committees and the strategic planning.
I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just highlighting for the public that you, an elected official, are not taking the time to collaborate with the public.
That's not actually true. I have, who was the board member I due to?
It is true. You were not there. That's a fact. So I just want to highlight, Mr. Capone, Ms. Tobacco are the only board members who have not attended a strategic planning committee while the rest of the, while the other seven board members... Why do you keep saying it's not true? You haven't been there. It is true. It is a fact. Facts matter. So the other seven board members have been at these strategic planning meetings because they are interested in collaborating with us as the public. I want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, I oppose the sentence. Have a great night, everyone.